Good evening, everyone. Call of order verify compliance with open me in law notification adoption of agenda. Can we all rise and pledge to the flag? Good job, ladies. All right. So, we will have the staff and student recognitions. We'll start with three A, Student Spotlight, Girls on the Run. Hi Lori.
Hi, thanks for having us this evening. So we have a Student Spotlight of our Girls on the Run team. It's our first team this year and I'm not gonna take a lot of time talking, but you can't highlight students at this age without highlighting the adults that support them because they don't drive yet and can't really get where they need to go. And so, I just wanna, and a couple of them are looking at me like, "Really?" So I just wanna thank the parents. There were parents that obviously supported their girls, signed them up for this opportunity. If it wasn't for those parents, it wouldn't have happened for the girls. And of course, to our volunteer coaches, we have Katie Coons here and Jackie Tao and then also Sarah Anderson is our third coach and couldn't join us this evening. But, without further ado, ladies.
Normally, I just get to use my loud voice. Alright, so, thank you so much for having us come today. We're so excited to share a little bit about our program. So, for our first season this year, we had twenty-one girls participate in the program, which was great. To run the program, you need to have at least eleven, and we were really excited with the interest that we saw. So, we started this program because we've really seen some themes among our girls where they're really struggling with things like just confidence, friendships, self-love. And, when I saw this program a couple of years ago, I was really interested. And, last year, I started talking to the right people, Ms. Tao and Mrs. Anderson, and we were able to go to an informational session where we, they could answer all the questions that we had, which was a lot, like, what would this look like at our school? What would it entail? What would we need to do? And then we also had a chance to preview the curriculum that they use. And from that moment on, we saw the opportunity we could offer HCE girls by combining physical activity and social emotional learning. So, we were, we were just hooked. One thing that we really like is that the curriculum reaches the girls at a very critical stage as they're building their self-confidence, when society starts to give them some different messages. Through the program, all the sessions really focus on creating that safe space for them where they can support each other, where they can try all the strategies that we're working on, and then start to set and reach goals individually and as a team. So, we were really thrilled with what we saw.
So throughout the ten weeks, the girls built strength and endurance and just really worked hard towards the five K run that is kind of the end goal of the program. And so, in order to prepare themselves, they had warm-up exercises, they would do social emotional learning activities that involved physical activities such as running back and forth, and just practicing all those social skills that we want them to learn as girls. And, every day, they would set up lap goals. So, one day, girls could want to achieve seven goals during our thirty to forty minute block of running, and they tried to reach more every single day. And then, at the very end, we had a practice five K that they all did really well in even though it was snowing and extremely wet and it got darker. So, they did great, finishing those fifteen to seventeen laps in the HCE playground. And then, another component of the program is a community impact project where the girls had to collectively choose as a team to support either a cause or a group of people that they really wanted to show appreciation for. So, they chose to write really positive messages and create little treat bags for our hundred four staff HCE members. And the signs today that they created are still located around the classrooms and in the hallways, and I know we got really, really positive feedback and made the teachers' days when they saw it in their mailboxes. And as coaches, you know, we really love the opportunity to work with them and watch them grow as leaders and supportive of one another. And we're really looking forward to next fall in our new season to see our new third and fifth grade girls group. And, I think right now, I would love for the girls to talk about their experiences and any of the parents that came tonight to share about theirs.
Hi, I'm Finley Johnson and I do Girls on the Run. It was really fun and it was a confidence builder. I had a really fun time helping and encouraging other girls. So, my biggest obstacle was the Tuesday before the five K, I broke my wrist. So, it was really hard and it was also really cold out, but I, all the other girls on the team helped me through it. We did some situations like peer pressure and we acted them out, and we also made a lot of new friends. It was really fun and I'd definitely do it again next year.
Hi, I'm Alex Norby and I go to HCE, and I go to Hales Corners Elementary. And because of Girls on the Run, I've made stronger relationships with my friends and I've made new friends. I love it when I go to school knowing that I have, knowing that I have a lot of friends because of Girls on the Run. In the five K run, my mom Pam ran with me and during the five K, I felt like me and my mom had a special bond. I used to feel insecure about myself and tie sweatshirts around my waist so no one could see my stomach, but after Girls on the Run, I stopped doing that. I felt great about myself and I was proud, and I was proud of myself. If I could, if I, if I could choose to do Girls on the Run or not do Girls on the Run, I would definitely, I would definitely do Girls on the Run.
Hi, I'm Lily Sitzberger. Girls on the Run taught me important lifelong skills, like how to solve problems and how to address solutions, like bullying and gossiping. Don't be a gossip monster, be a gossip stopper. One of my favorite parts was running and talking with my friends and teachers. I always learned something new about them, about each of them. I would definitely join Girls on the Run again. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amelia and I really enjoyed Girls on the Run. I thought it, I thought it taught me skills that I'll use for the rest of my life, such as take a breather, be there, whatever it's called. So, it's stop, breathe, think, respond, and review, and that really helped me with when I have conflicts with friends or my other peers in my classroom. Other people in class, I taught them this skill and they really liked it, and now it's usually really used in our classroom, which I think really helped us. And sometimes, after a really hard day of school, math, reading, learning, I think going to Girls on the Run and just getting to run and relax was really calming, and I think it really helped me build confidence for myself and for other people.
Good evening, I'm Jen Sitzberger, my daughter's Lily. And I think I speak for all the parents when I said we really saw a change in the girls kind of throughout the program and the way they would, they were more self-confident. Lily came home and talked about a lot of the little sayings that they learned, and she kind of used those in her everyday life as some strategies to handle, part of, you know, handle growing up. I wanted to speak about the end result, which was that Miller Park five K run, which was absolutely amazing. That was one of the parts I got to, you know, see and be a part of firsthand. I think everyone there felt energized and everyone felt a sense of belonging. I thought before the run, Lily learned perseverance and commitment, and after she crossed that finish line, the smile on her face was, I'll never forget it. And, I wanna thank the teachers for bringing this program to HCE because I think it was just a wonderful thing for our kids and our community. So, thank you.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
What were the ages or the grades?
Third through fifth grade girls.
And so, how many of the girls are in third through, through third and fourth so that they could do it again next year?
There were two third graders, so it was Finley and Alex, and the rest of the girls were fourth and fifth graders. So, we had twenty-one. The program allowed us to add that extra friend join because I know there's a waiting list and they kind of allow a week to register, so the rest were fourth and fifth grade girls.
I'm just thrilled for you that you had such a good time with this program, so thank you, coaches, and thank you, kids, for making this a wonderful experience. Thank you for telling us about it.
So, you guys all gonna keep up with running come spring and into the summer? Because you already did the five K and that's really the, that's the hardest one to just start getting into that, so I'm sure there's a bunch of opportunities around here, so really happy for you guys. Congratulations.
It's very impressive how you all came up to the speaker and just spoke and had very a lot of confidence, and I'm sure this program is one little piece that'll help you there. And you guys can be leaders amongst your fellow students. So, off to a great start, and we really appreciate you guys coming. And parents, thank you for supporting them, and the teachers, wow, great program, great program, keep doing it. Thank you. Now, we have three B Staff Spotlight, but we have some sick teachers, so we are not going to have that this evening. We're gonna have to reschedule that. And we'll go to four, Whitno High School Student Council Report. And we have a celebrity amongst us here, I see, huh? Amelia? What do you got for us this month?
Oh, you're fine. No, you're all good. Yup.
Alright, so first for our pop-ins, we visited the Winter Musical on January sixteenth. It went fairly well. It was one of the first actual events that we attended, so we wanna continue these. So, we were brainstorming possible future events with our student council members with like events that they kind of thought were like really underattended and stuff. And one of them we thought of was the Destination Imagination Tournament. I don't, I forgot who was here, but we heard some of the kids from the elementary schools speak about it, and we reached out to one of their coaches. I forgot his name.
Ben is his first name, I don't know.
Yeah, and we are planning on attending that, you know, making like posters for the little elementary schoolers and stuff, just to show our support for that, kind of to make it a district thing rather than just in our school. And then, we also brainstormed some other sports at the high school that don't really have many fans at.
Alrighty, and then next, so we had our glow coming kind of dance event. We had to cancel it due to low ticket sales, which is unfortunate, but that's just how it went. So, after canceling it, we kind of asked our student council, we came together and we were like, okay, what did we do well? What can we change for next year and, and what could we have done better? So, we all agreed that we did well on advertisement. So, everybody kind of posted, you know, since a lot of people go on social media and stuff, so a lot of the kids posted the posters on their Snapchats and Instagram and stuff like that. So, yeah, I think we did well on that portion. We needed to improve being kind of more precise because a lot of people were confused when it came to the idea that they thought it was too broad, so kind of further explaining it to students so that they kind of get what the, what we were going for. And then, for next year, we're gonna ask more for student feedback so that they feel more included, so that they know what's going on, the specific event.
And going off of that, we're using this as like a learning experience for us. Sydney will talk about that later.
Alright, so the next event that we're essentially looking forward to is obviously Gives Back Week. I think this is gonna be one of our bigger gives back weeks than previous years. We're gonna be donating to three different organizations, the McCann Brown Foundation, which is essentially a homeless foundation that serves the general population, and then the Joy House, which focuses more on women and children, primarily those who are escaping instances of domestic violence or other, other situations like that. And then, the Milwaukee County Zoo is essentially collecting used or old electronic devices that they'll be able to properly recycle, and then they take that money and donate it to their, yeah, their gorillas event. And then, pretty much in order to tackle everything that we've been doing, we split our, our council up into different committees, and one of the biggest things that we're working on is making sure that our committees function well, just because like, we've had issues in the past where we pretty much have the head of the committee doing all the work and then no one else is informed on what's happening in their committee. So, since there's five committees and five members of the exact where we've all paired up with them to make sure that they have a timeline and they know that we're, that we're kind of there to guide them, and if they need any information, that they're not just making it up on their own, that they're coming to make sure that, you know, we're involved in the process and that it's not like we're just backing away and expecting them to do everything. And then, one of the most exciting things personally that I think we're going to be doing before Gives Back Week most likely is involving other clubs to help fundraise for these foundations, just because we wanted to, like, one of the biggest joys for us as student council members is to be able to connect kids in our student, in our school and our district, but also being a part of student council means that we wanna give back to the community, and we wanted to give other students an opportunity to be able to make that same connection as well, not feeling like they had to be a part of student council or take all the roles, role, roles of a student council member, that they can just, you know, have one day that they have a bake sale and they sell all their items and all that money goes to something that they, that they know is trustworthy and that it kind of unites our school as one big front, so.
Yeah, yeah, we just kind of wanted to incorporate other clubs, so it's not just a council thing, it's a whole school thing, because we'll probably see more participation, we're hoping.
And just moving forward in the future, we're gonna be having some open council meetings, especially to get feedback about how the winter event worked and how we can improve that. So, these will be open to all the grades and anyone can come, and we're looking at having them either like before school, after school, or maybe during Falcon Time. And we're gonna begin to promote and schedule these dates so that we can get feedback as soon as possible. And we have the promotion committee of our student council working on that right now. And then, we're gonna be sending out a Google form to the students prior to the meeting just so we can have a direction and hopefully get a lot of good talk.
Anybody have anything for them?
Is, are, are these meetings not open to begin with?
No, so the meetings are usually closed off to members, so if someone's thinking of joining, we usually invite them. We have our meetings on Friday mornings, so if someone shows interest in council, we invite them to the meeting. But having these open meetings, I think it's gonna be, you know, nicer so that people don't have to commit to being on council.
Why, why are not all of the meetings open and people can just come and observe if they want?
We, we generally do have a pretty open meeting policy if someone wants to pop in, but we never see it happening. We did change the criteria for what designates like somebody to be eligible for student council, so we definitely have like a higher, like, amount of people that wanted to become members. But oftentimes, since meetings are in the morning and they're Friday mornings, like, people just don't wanna come. I think, like, we obviously want people to come and give their input in, but like, we want the meetings to be more focused towards like kind of solving this issue.
Especially when we have like time constraints, like around homecoming and stuff like that, like, we really have to get stuff done, so we need people that we can rely on. But, we do wanna have these more often so that we can get input from everybody, even if they don't wanna be committed to the club.
And I think it's always been a policy that if there's an issue that you wanna talk about, you can always come, even if you're not a student council member, and we'll always take time to listen to your considerations, but we don't really promote that as much as we should. So, these are really gonna be promoted well so that everyone knows that they're welcome. And then, the different times, maybe we'll work better with other people, especially Falcon Time where most people are there already, so.
But your basic meeting is closed and people, the students, your constituents in a sense can't just come and observe?
They're never, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, we're concerned, they're never closed.
We've never turned genuine down.
Yeah, but just nobody, like, we've never seen someone come up. I mean, I personally have invited people to come to council meetings when it comes to decisions like homecoming or feel about certain topics, but we never have people come out of their way to.
I'm, I'm not talking about an invite because you think that they may have some...
Yeah, they're, they're always, they're always open for people to come in. If you're, like, there's no commitment until they say like, "I want to be a, a member."
Okay, thanks.
Well, I think it's really cool that you guys are reaching out to Destination Imagination, great idea, get the whole district involved, wonderful. And that you went on, and went and got feedback about your glow coming, the failure, and hopefully you can fix it and maybe give it a shot next year and, and pass that information on to the people behind you coming up, that they know the do's and don'ts. How did you choose the benefactors for the donations, the three groups?
We got suggestions from students on student council, specifically...
So, you knew of these, they knew of these in the area?
Yeah, so one member on student council specifically mentioned the McCann Brown because her like church worked closely with the organization, so that was cool. So, we just kind of figured that. And as a council, we decided that we wanted to do something towards the homeless population because of the, the, okay, yeah, the DNC coming to like Milwaukee area, a lot of the homeless population is being pushed out, so we thought it was important to, you know, kind of donate and things of that sort.
As I say, you did do a really good job, I think. I know it didn't go off well or it didn't happen with the dance, but you guys did do a good job of getting it out there, and I really appreciate that you took that extra amount of effort to get the feedback and get suggestions and do all that. Hopefully, next year, it'll, it'll work out, but I do think you guys did a really good job.
Thank you.
I appreciate the effort you guys went to. I'm sorry you didn't end up hosting the event, but, I mean, I've hosted plenty and it's not easy to put stuff on, so I appreciate the effort.
Honestly, I think we're all looking forward to future years, you know, the three of us will be gone next year, but like, to know that this is a learning opportunity and I honestly think that, you know, it doesn't matter who gets the credit for it in the end, it's kind of just the fact that we're, that we know that, yeah, that we'll improve it in the future, it doesn't, none of us are really phased by it. And so, you just wanna move forward and really see how we can take all this extra time that would've been spent into the dance and see how we can utilize it for next year and following years.
Yeah, and Lauren and I definitely have plans to use all this feedback for next year and hopefully, hopefully improve it so that we can have a successful winter event.
Anybody else? And we're gonna get busy real quick here with the forums, so we are finalizing some things and we're working with Mr. Bowman and Jessie and do a good job like we did last year, it's awesome. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Now, we have number five, Discussion and Future Action Items, A Coach and Advisor Compensation Structure. Dave, how are you?
Good, how was everybody?
Great.
Good. So, I'm bringing forward a proposal for approving the Appendix F and H of the Co-Curricular Coaches and Advisors Handbook that was attached in the packet. This proposal hasn't been reviewed for a number of years, actually, since 2013, 2014 with the compensation package, so we wanted to look through and see if there were some inconsistencies and there were some equitability issues. And going through it, I wanted to put everything together in a nice clean set, as well as provide some guidelines for the coaches and advisors, as well as providing some transparency of why we are doing what we are doing. So, there's been a couple changes, not a lot, as you can see, part of the background and references, there's a couple bullet points of some summary of the changes. Adding a dance and cheer assistant as a, as a position is vital for the continued success that our programs are having. We wanted to make sure that there were situations where there's some, in clarity about coaches splitting contracts with co-head coaches, and we wanted to put that all into concise detailed format. We wanted to also provide some clarity with our drama and our student council programs because there were a lot of different positions in there, and depending on the program as well as, that's been production, in production for drama, as well as for student council of different events that are going on, we wanted to make sure that there is consistency and clarity in that. And then, obviously, we wanted to put in a nice alphabetical table for yourselves so that you can find everything, so that's what I'm proposing for right now.
Great. Any questions or comments?
How's this compensation model compared to what we do now, as far as like some total for the year, like budget?
The, the only addition would be for the assistant coaches for cheer and for dance, and then there were some obscure numbers, like, for a middle school student council, it was thirteen seventy-six. I'm not quite sure on back in thirteen and fourteen how they came up with that number of thirteen seventy-six, so it was rounding up based off of conversations with Mike and the business department of what was effective. So, the, the difference is gonna be very minimal, under five thousand dollars total.
Total, okay. Also, you mentioned, I see some things here like the second column over, like under the sports, this group, and you say like girl swim and dive, and I assume there's boys swim and dive then for head and assistants. There's a track and field co-ed, does that mean it's the same coaches that are, that are coaching the girls and the boys, is that why it's?
Yes.
Okay. Like, but wrestling, is that considered a co-ed sport now or not? Because I see it says boys, but we have girls wrestling, don't we?
We do have girls that wrestle part of the boys' team. There is no specific girls wrestling that is sanctioned by the WIA yet, so very similar to, we have girls on our boys' golf team because we don't offer girls' golf team, so the girls are able to participate with the boys. Here, they opened it up for, the girls are able to participate with the wrestling team.
And we had girls on the football team before too, right?
Correct, yep, a hundred percent. We did this last year.
But they're listed as boys' sports still?
Yes.
And we can do that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then you mentioned volleyball, boys, head, that listed as co-op?
That is correct. We co-op with Greendale.
Do we still co-op?
I'm sorry, Greenfield, I'm sorry.
Do we still co-op wrestling?
We do, yes, that's with Greendale.
Okay, it's just not listed as co-op here, it's all on this list, that's what I wondered.
For this is, this is the payment that we actually make for the head coaches, and so we don't actually pay the actual coaches because we're not the lead school, so Greenfield with our co-op is the lead school.
For volleyball?
For boys volleyball.
I see wrestling, it's us, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it.
Anybody else? Thank you, Dave.
Thanks very much, Dave.
Thank you. So, keep it rolling, okay? So, the next item is the review of the actual handbook. This was brought forward because there were so many different things out in the air. It was a piece here that I brought forward, another piece here, another piece here, and we needed to bring consistency and clarity to all the coaches and advisors, and, and put it into a format that is easily accessible as well as easily understandable. And, and ultimately, that's what we did. We did create some clarity when it came to different tier levels for creating clubs and different groups. There was also some major concern from the individuals that I talked with, clubs, advisors, and coaches about how do we determine starting a new club? What are the processes for that? And in the past, it was some uncertainty on that, so myself with a number of teachers and advisors and coaches put together a tier process, and that is indicated under Appendix D in the handbook. Another thing that we put out is obviously the different seasons and different levels that we wanted them to be at, but we also wanted to talk about academic eligibility, and there was some inconsistency and clarity of how do you determine academic eligibility for clubs as well as athletics? So, taking the school calendar, we came up with a academic eligibility checkup, and what this is doing is it's providing, you can see the example up on the screen right now, it's providing details of when we are going to be... It's providing details of when we are going to be doing academic grade checks for clubs as well as athletics so that the teachers know, the club advisors know specifically so that we can have everything prepared and give as much information to the students and to the parents as possible. So that was a major change as well. So basically, it's just taking a lot of different things, consolidating it, adding a couple things for clarity and consistency. And that is the handbook that we have in front of us.
Dave, also, you want to mention the video you created?
Oh, yes. So to help people, sometimes when you just look at a chart like this, it's not necessarily clear what you're looking at. So I put together a video of explaining exactly what they're looking at and it's on the YouTube channel that we have and so that people can read it. Because I actually didn't include the words, kind of like subtitles as well, so they can click on to see that if they didn't quite understand and go back to it. Or I can take them screen by screen through that if they're more of an audio learner.
And that video is for parents, teachers?
Yep.
Coaches?
Coaches, advisors, yep.
So this is published on the Whitnall webpage or will be?
It will be, yes.
For the public?
Correct, yep.
I had two questions going through the handbook. So you just talked about the eligibility rules and with grades. Was that something that's based on WIAA regulations? Is this something for our conference or is it consistent across the school conference or how did?
It's, it's consistent in what we have with our code of conduct that was approved last, or last year. So and that which falls into the guidelines of the WIAA as well.
Okay. And then the other thing I saw is you had broken up the clubs into different tiers?
Correct.
And part of the tiers was how often they meet? Tier fours are supposed to meet two times a month?
Ideally, we, tier four is the highest tier package that we have. So we would, you know, for example, would like to see our student council and our DECA and National Honor Society, the higher end clubs that have, to meet that often, yes.
Okay, then we need to look at the word choice that was in there, like bi-monthly versus semi-monthly.
Okay. Thank you.
In the, in the interest of clarity and readability and that kind of stuff that you mentioned, I, I kind of, I scanned through the document and one thing I, I was like, okay, so here it says ADE, here it says Athletic Director, here it says Activities Director. I come to find out it's the same person, right? Activities slash Athletic Director?
Correct.
So I wonder, at least for me, it would have helped if it would have mentioned somewhere early in the document, you know, Activities slash Athletic Director and then parentheses AAD. And then, and then further in the document, either use the full thing or AAD. But, but I mean, I looked through pages and pages and then I can't remember where I finally found it. But, and made an assumption, I just, I just looked for consistency and then in that early on, kind of defining what the abbreviation means. You know what I'm saying? Just for clarity and readability.
Kevin?
I'm getting a couple.
Anybody else? In the, for the clubs, you have, you have academic standards to participate?
Yes, we do.
And we set those?
That's falling underneath our code of, our co-curricular code of conduct, so yes. Anybody that is part of a co-curricular, which falls underneath our clubs as well. We did have a situation last year that we found out that that might not have been taking place. So we have to be very clear that everybody's understanding that our co-curriculars range from activities to athletics to groups and everybody falls underneath that. And then this is giving some clarity to that.
All right, could you just think athletics now?
Some people think that, yeah, unfortunately.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dave.
Thanks much.
Thank you.
No announcements, no items for future discussion.
Attention, attention, you gotta get it right.
Sorry, I get in my class sometimes.
Items for future consideration. Does anybody have any? Does anybody have any announcements?
Yeah. All right. I went to the expo because it was a community event. Steven was there, Jonathan was there, I don't know if anybody else was there. But there was a good attendance and I think a lot of people really, really had positive feedback. We saw a lot of stuff in the forum about it and all the coaches are there. You could go talk to everybody and a lot of good information. Charlie gave some nice academic presentations about the new cum laude system, et cetera. So that was great. And then Saturday, Lisa and I attended like three sporting events. So we went to, we saw a wrestling conference, which I believe we, we had a lot of conference champions, but I believe we took third. Swimming and diving, we actually took third, which was, we were hoping for fourth, but third was even better. And then we went to Bradley Tech on Saturday night, but unfortunately, we did not win that.
Very good.
So yeah, lots of stuff.
I believe our JV got second too in that conference thing. It was nicely done.
What sport?
Swimming. And for the, I guess for the people in the room, because by the time anybody sees the tape, it'll be too late. But for the next 55 minutes until eight o'clock, Chipotle is doing, they're hosting the fundraiser, 33% of your bill to the support Whitnall Swimming. So.
Oh, yeah.
So anybody, I heard till eight. If it's till nine, that's even better.
But yeah, I was saying, there's a lot of people there when I went, so.
Yeah, me too.
Hopefully, yeah, if we, if this thing gets out of here, you should.
Yeah, exactly. Stop talking. That's all I got.
And March 7th, Whitnall, Whitnall is hosting the solo and ensemble competition. So it's going to be here all day that Saturday, the 7th.
That big thing that all this?
So it's not, they've broken it up. So it used to be like seven and a half schools. Now we're down to like fourish, I believe. So it's still going to be an all-day event. The music boosters are running concessions all day as fundraiser. So should be good, good music.
And I wanted to congratulate the Whitnall Dance Team on taking third in Hip Hop at State.
Hip Hop, alright.
Very good. Meeting debrief. Pretty quick.
I, I like the length of the meeting.
Second.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Good evening.